Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting. This evening, we have some housekeeping items to take care of, and then we're going to continue on to our public hearings that will start at 6:30. I just want to inform you, if you're here for the Elma Circle hearing, we have you first on the agenda, but we are going to put you at the end because we are missing some people in the room, and so we're going to have to play this one by ear. Just wanted to inform everyone of that. All right, let's just start with review, and I need a motion to approve a bill to the community advocate for $638 for the August 26, 2024 legal notices.
I move to approve the bill.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, then we have some minutes that we need to approve. We have four months' worth of minutes that need approval. It would be for the February 26, 2024, meeting, the July 31, 2023, meeting, the November 22, 2022, meeting, and the October 30, 2023, meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
So, may I, Madam Chair? It is just three meeting minutes on the agenda tonight, I believe. So it's November of 2022, July 31, 2023, and October 30, 2023.
So no February 26?
Correct.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes as drafted.
Get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. First hearing of this evening, this is for the Seneca Street hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Mahir Acharya, 8 Seneca Street, for six variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 6, Table 1, and Section 7, Table 2, to convert a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling with a side yard setback 13 feet where 30 feet is required, a rear yard setback of 39.4 where 50 feet is required, and a front yard setback of 31.2 feet where 50 feet is required, a lot area of 13,900 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required, and the lot coverage percentage exceeds the maximum allowance of 10% on property located at 8 Seneca Street in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 29, Plot 192000. Applicants, if you could please step forward and have a seat, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Mahir Acharya.
Thank you. My name is Farvi Nikship.
We're here to listen to what you have to tell us a little bit more on what you're looking to do for your six variances.
Sure, yeah. So this is the first time, so it's something we have never done before.
Okay. Take your time.
Yeah, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present the case. So we bought this house at 8 Seneca Street in December 2023, and it's both for both of us, my wife and I, are living there, and it's a pretty huge house, and we thought that initially it was, we thought it's really good that we are getting so much space, but eventually we figured out that it's a huge house for just both of us, so, and also because of all the mortgage interest rates, it's pretty costly. We thought we can, our friends are looking for places, so we thought we can host them at our place. So currently, we are renting out to some friends, but it is not, it is not treated as a multifamily, it's a single-family house, everything is connected internally, only one kitchen. The hardship was, eventually, we thought we can convert it into a multifamily, two-family, and we spoke with the building department a couple of times about it to get their thought process on it, and eventually led to this meeting today. The previous owner, the hardship where it comes from is the previous owner modified the property in a way that it has an additional space with separate entrance and small kitchenette with sink. They took permits for converting a two-car garage into that additional living space in 2020, 2021, and when we bought, it came just like everything done. We haven't done anything additional on top of this, except some renovation on the part we occupy. So it is kind of built in a way, it's pretty huge, even for a big family, just half of it is like more than enough, it's like 3,800 square feet in total, and it's built in a way that if we put like some separations, the doors that kind of connects the two parts, if you just put walls there, put a fire-rated, one-arf-fire-rated separation, I think it's without any external changes, we can convert it into a two-family, and the reason we wanted to do that was to help with the mortgage, as well as also contribute towards the much required housing needs. We have heard a lot of other meetings here as well, that thing has been presented previously. So that was something that we thought we could do with this property, and we don't intend, so we have currently hosted our friends there, and we haven't like hurted any of the neighborhood integrity, we really like the neighborhood, really quiet and nice neighborhood. So, yeah, as I mentioned, the work doesn't include any external changes, no additional buildings. We probably put a fence in the backyard to separate it out, that's probably the extent of it, that we do externally, and even the parking is enough for six to eight cars, so no, nothing to be changed in the parking in the proposal as well, and it won't also increase the traffic on the street because the parking hosts enough, can host enough car for two families. So, yeah, that's our proposal, we happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Tonight, attending our hearing is the building inspector, Patty Sheehan. Can we start with you, Patty? Give us some background, please.
Sure, you know, as the owner said, we were communicating since like November of last year to help you understand what this property is, that's in a single-family zoning district. It does have a garage that was converted to living space in 2021. We issued a certificate of occupancy for that garage. It was not for a separate living unit, it was for additional living space for the main portion of the house, so it remains a single-family dwelling. So we discussed the options of use of a two-family, and obviously, anyone has the right to come before the zoning board and ask for exceptions to the zoning bylaw, so that's why the applicants are here. However, it is very unusual that we have so many variance requests put on one application for a change of use in all the dimensional requirements.
Thank you. Louise, anything else to add? Okay, thank you.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Ms. Sheehan, when there was a certificate of occupancy issued for the garage space, was there a kitchen or kitchenette included in that permit?
Yes.
Okay.
So before we open this up to public comments, let's chat amongst the board. David, you want to start?
I don't have anything to start us off now.
Okay, wonderful. Anne?
So, one of the things that we have to consider in the zoning, on the zoning board, is a restriction that we can't grant variances or special permits if a property is not in compliance with zoning at the time. So when you are coming here, making representations, we assume that everything is as you say it is, and so I just want to put that out there, because there has been a lot of input from neighbors and from other sources that perhaps it's not currently being used as a one, as a single-family. We don't have any ability to determine that, and it's not necessarily our purview, but I just wanted to make that statement. I think that's all I have right now, I'm sure I'll have more.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we spoke with our neighbors and also with Patty about it, so probably because we have our friends renting out with us, it is, from externally, it could be seen that it, and it also has a separate door, separate entrance for that additional space, but we still have common spaces, it is all connected internally, we only have one kitchen in the house, like full kitchen with the gas range and everything, so it has not been used as a two-family, but from externally, someone looks at it, someone renting out, it can be seen like that, but I can say on that, and like, as far as we know, and we have checked with some attorneys as well, we are not using it as a two-family right now, and there are not more than three unrelated parties in the overall house, so in our best knowledge, it has been used as a single-family, everyone has access to all the parts of the house.
Thank you.
Hmm. I don't know, I'm having, I'm having a hard time with this one. I understand why you're coming before the board and what you're looking to do here. A couple of things that are sticking out to me right off the bat is, obviously, the zoning district, which doesn't allow for two-family dwellings, and the size of the lot. I know it's a big house, but it's a small lot. It doesn't meet some other zoning requirements, including the lot area and floor area ratio and items like that. I hate to get nitpicky in some of the things that you've spoken to us about, but I guess those are kind of the things that are sticking with me on it. I'm still trying to organize my thoughts, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we can.
No, sorry. Couple of things, the financial hardship that you spoke of, that by itself isn't a reason for the board to grant your variance. And as far as the variance itself, usually would be related to the shape of your lot, soil conditions, topography, okay? I'm not sure any of that exists here. And as far as the neighbors who are here, who have interest in it from a one-family to two-family, is there anything you could speak of that to allay their concerns they may have?
Sure, yeah. I think some of them has opinions in support with us.
They'll have a chance, but in terms of, you know, before they say what they're going to say, you have anything to say to them to allay their concerns over if this is approved to a two-family?
Sure, absolutely. So I think there could be concerns about changing the dynamics of the neighborhood if there are not owners but renters living in the community, so in that sense, like so far, we have been renting out to our friends, it's been six months, and there is, I think all the neighbors know them very well, and it's, we are pretty, we make sure that we rent out to people who will be like a part of the community, so there is no such incident from our side, no nuisance being created in the street, so that's one thing. The other thing is, if we convert it into a two-family, how does it change the market value of the other houses? So on that, and I would say that this house has been pretty hard sell for the previous owners. When we bought it, we saw a lot of people came to see it, but it's such a huge and difficult house to accommodate, like unless there is a very, very big family, like 15, 20 people, no one would buy this house because it doesn't have a garage and lot of space that someone cannot use. So that was the reason we thought maybe this could be a potential future for this house, if we, and it's so easy, the way it has been done before, if, it is very less effort or external, no external change, that it can be converted into two-family, and then it won't be pulling down the market, the prices, like market price for other houses around, because for us, if we are not able to afford this house living the same way we are right now, because without converting into a two-family, it is not a sustainable place to rent out to someone without a full kitchen, so we will eventually have to probably just be by ourselves, and we won't be able to probably afford it, and if we sell it, again, it will be sold at a very, like a lower than the market price, because there are very, very less buyer, buyers out there for a house like this. Even when we bought it, we bought it like a huge discount, like 60, 70K below market price at that time. So the future of this house decides, if it decides the rates for other houses, in some way, the comps, it will affect the other single-family houses on the street. So for others, if it is, in my opinion, it is better if it's a two-family house, then it won't affect their houses' prices as well.
Okay. So what would you say specifically your hardship is?
Yeah, other than financial hardship and the use, like what would we, like there is no use of that one side of the, the west side of the house, and the way it is built, it's not like very open space. We would otherwise spend money to open it up and make it useful for us. There are two-family rooms and stairs between them, so we have to like do a lot of restructuring for us to make a good use of that space, and even then, such a huge space, we're not sure, like maybe we'll coming back to you with a new proposal of using it for a yoga studio or something like that, which probably might not be a better idea, because it's such a huge space.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
So I would be curious, so when you purchased this house, did you buy it as a single-family home? Was there any representation made to you that it was a multifamily, or?
So we were told that it has an in-law, but there was not an in-law, and I checked with Patty about it, she pointed me in the right direction in that.
So now you understand that you could apply for an in-law, which would be a special permit, which is a lower threshold of requirements versus a variance, so.
But we do not have our in-laws here to stay with us.
Sure.
And honestly, our primary objective is to use that place as an extra additional space to be rented out, that can help us, as well as some other nice folks out there who are looking for nice communities to live in. So if that's the case, we will be open to explore that, if we can ask for a special permit for an in-law and use it in that sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I'm very curious to hear who in the audience is going to be talking with us this evening, but my concern is, you know, we're asking for variances with no hardship, so our decision must be based on a hardship, and unfortunately, financial repercussions are not that. I do understand all the things that you said, but you are firmly located in a single-family, single-family zoned neighborhood, and so I think with that being said, what I'd like to do is open this up, this is a public hearing, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to be heard, we would invite you to please step up, identify yourself, the speakers rate, are the podium, podium, thank you.
I don't like getting up.
We have somebody.
That's right. Go ahead, you go.
The man in the red sweater.
Okay.
First of all, thank you for.
If you could just use the microphone, that would be helpful, and if you could identify yourself.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Yep, Brian Lawn, 4 Greenwood Ave.
Thank you.
And I came here more out of interest of what the process is, I appreciate moving forward, I've got to leave, I have to take care of my wife, who just came from the hospital, but I guess part of it was curiosity. I always thought it was a two-family. I was always jealous they had the biggest lot in the neighborhood. So it's more of just general support, I will say, for making sure people understand that. My son's out in Portland, Oregon, and they are in a, even a worst housing situation out there, so I have to be honest about it, and there's a little bit in my heart that brings that out a bit, if you can accept that or not, but I just got a text, I appreciate you moving this forward. I guess I really have to say, I always thought it was, there was always five cars out there, I didn't, it's our walking area, and maybe because, again, I have a little bit of a sense with the children, but I just wanted to bring my sense of support, and with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you moving this forward.
Yes, our pleasure.
I wanted to add on his point.
Can we just go through the public hearing first, and then if there's something directed right at you, we'll allow you to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ken Lardus, I'm at 9 Seneca Street, I live directly across the street, and so I'm happy to hear your interpretation of the bylaw and the message that you're sending, but there's a bigger issue here, and I really don't want to besmirch anybody, but the gentleman spoke to Patty in November, and he got certain answers and information. He bought the house in December. Since then, he has rented two pots of the unit, two units in the house, to what he refers to as friends, and he claims that they have full access to the house. Yet at the same time, you also hear that the in-law apartment slash garage apartment has two separate entrances. In the literature that's been provided, what's left out is, there's also a bedroom in that garage apartment. I'm familiar with the house, having lived there since 1977, there's also an era, the house was built, I'm sure, in '71, not '61, to give you a little perspective. We have a problem here, and I'm glad you're kind of nipping this in the bud, but this won't be the end of this, because this gentleman's not going to take no. He has buyer's remorse, he knew what he was buying, I believe he bought it with the intent of renting the spaces, which he pursued vigorously, and now he wants to rent it as a two-family, and obviously, I think it's a much more lucrative rental to be renting it as a full-family unit. I will tell you this, I've, since they've moved in, the tenants, and again, I'm sure these are all nice people, they seem like delightful, and the only reason I didn't pursue this beyond when I first called Patty in May, was because I heard the tenants upstairs were going to be moving at the end of the summer. I didn't want to disrupt them, I've got kids, I know what it's like to be young and trying to figure things out, so I backed off. Then I got this letter in my mailbox. First time I've ever spoken to Mr. Acharya was on the way in to this building tonight, except two times where I waved and said hello. He's never spoken to me about this, he only has spoken to the neighbor directly beside me that I know of, and he did speak to my wife today, who was sitting on the porch. This is going to come back, and I think somehow, some way, this needs to be nipped in the bud strongly, and the fight relative to his ability to rent space to friends needs to be addressed at a further time, and I will pursue with my legal resources how to pursue that. This is a resident-one neighborhood, its kids, its families, I've looked at a car outside my window since the people upstairs moved in. It's been a truck, a rental, now it's another truck, it's in and out at different times of the day and night, I understand people work nights, that's fine. The point is, there's not enough parking space, not that this is even a point at this point, but the claims are just preposterous, and I'm sorry to be negative and even angry about this, but this has been a summer of angst. Patty can tell you when I first called her, and Patty knows me, we've dealt with each other over the years on many things. I've tried to control the desire, you know, to take this thing head-on, and then I get this letter, which forced me to where I am right now. I don't like being like this, as I said to Mr. Acharya and his wife, I don't just want to be your neighbor, I want to be your friend. This isn't a friendly way to be doing business, but this is just wrong, so I'll stop there, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I do apologize for having to take this position this way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All moved. Okay, so, do we have any more discussion before we take this to a vote?
Yeah, I've got, I can, I can share some input now, that I've heard some from the public and from the rest of the board. I think one, one thing that was, that was, that was important for me to hear was from Patty about how it is unusual to see this many, you know, geometric requests in a variance. One thing that I have trouble with is that the lot size, specifically being 13,900 feet, when 20,000 is required for a, 20,000 is required for a single-family home, and I'm scrolling through the map, and it doesn't look like a single lot in that neighborhood has the 20,000, and that's the bylaws as they were updated in 2003, and this home was built, obviously, long before that, along with the rest of the neighborhood, so, you know, along with how Tim framed the, the.
Hardship?
The hardship, and how that is what necessitates granting a relief, it's really hard for me to overcome that, and, you know, looking through the rest of the bylaws, the, for that zone, all other uses is a 40,000 square foot requirement, so, you know, we're not even close to that. So those things are just really hard to overcome for me, and I'm curious to see how the rest of the board thinks.
Yeah.
So in looking at the criteria, criteria that would be required for a variance, we can consider things like soil conditions, or the shape or topography of the land or the structure, or we can, can consider that you've shown that literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, or we could consider that granting a variance where granting it wouldn't lead to substantial detriment to the public good, and that the variance wouldn't cause substantial detriment to the public good, sorry, repeated that, oh, and that it can be granted to respect, with the, to respect the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. For me, I think what I'm hearing is that, that it's hard to pay the mortgage, which is a financial consideration, but I don't know if it's a hardship, there are other alternatives to that sort of debt. So that is what I'm struggling with in addition to what the other members have articulated. I am not seeing a hardship here, or a requisite hardship.
Kevin?
No, I don't have anything further to add than what's been said by other board members who have an agreement.
Tim?
You seem like very nice people, it just doesn't, really doesn't meet the criteria for the board to grant the variance. It's not something that I could be in favor of, because it, the financial hardship by itself isn't a reason to grant the variance, and along with everything else, it seems to be a derogation from the nature and intent of the bylaw.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to belabor it, but I would agree, I don't think that there is substantial hardship involved in this, and I respect, you know, your opinion, and I struggle with the idea that you might have bit off more than you can chew with the house, but I would also, you know, welcome you to come back, doesn't sound like this is going to be a position that you can take with a special permit, but we do often provide special permits for people that are looking for in-law relief, so that may or may not add to your thinking on it, but I just, I do not see that there is a substantial hardship that would meet the criteria that we have to vote on. would meet the criteria that we have to vote on. So I would be opposed to it as well.
I do have one other question for the applicants.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is the proposed unit 900 square feet or less?
I believe it's more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, let's, um, can I get a motion, please?
I would move to deny the application of Mehir Archaya of eight Seneca Street for six variances, including Section 6, Table 1, and Section 7, Table 2, to convert a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling with a side yard setback 13 feet where 30 feet is required, a rear yard setback of 39 and four tenths feet where 50 feet is required, a front yard setback of 31 and two tenths feet when 50 feet is required, a lot area of 13,900 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required, and the lot coverage percentage exceeds the maximum, maximum allowed of 10%.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, this is to hear the appeal of David Sorbarrow, 100 Hillside Ave., White Plains, New York, for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to continue operating an automotive repair and sales business upon property located at 287 Grafton Street in the Commercial Business Zoning District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 34, Plot 073000. Can the applicant please step forward? All right, it's our lucky night tonight.
Good evening. My name is Adam Luna, and I'm in, I'm here on behalf of Mavis Discount Tires, who the owner is listed as Mr. Davis Sorbarrow. And I'm dialing in on the invite that was forwarded to me.
Thank you. Could I ask you to identify yourself again? I could not hear that.
Yeah, my name is Adam Luna, and I am the Compliance Manager for Mavis Discount Tires.
Can everybody hear this?
No, can we turn the volume up at all?
I don't know.
No, okay. Maybe he could just speak up.
We could just ask you to speak a little bit louder. We're having a hard time with our audio. If you could...
Yes, my name is Adam Luna, L-U-N-A, from Mavis Tires, Compliance Manager.
Thank you. Could you give us an idea of what you're looking to, to do with the property at 287 Grafton Street, please?
It to operate the, the business space there for auto service repairs to, you know, our customers that come into our building. There's no anything else additional that we're looking to do at the time with regard to that space.
Okay, thank you. Louise or Patty, do you have any insight into this?
No, they're just the new owners, and so they're looking to continue the operation there. I do believe there might be the need for a waiver request. The plot plan provided is, you know, an older one, but we can go through that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any comments before we open this up?
It appears that they, they're going to operate as they were before, just under a different business ownership. That's as far as I can tell.
Yep, okay. Ann?
I don't have any questions.
Kevin?
No, neither do I.
All right, Tim?
Adam, this, this property is, was previously, before Mavis purchased it, what, what was the name of the business? Do you know?
Uh, yes, it's National Tire and Battery, N-T-B.
Okay. Are there any, with, with the, so it's under new ownership of Mavis currently right now, correct?
That is correct.
Are there any changes proposed to the, to the property, the parking lot, anything like that?
No, not at the moment.
So it's just staying as is, just continue the operation as the, as an automobile service repair business?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a, we do have waivers as well, so we need a full list of the waivers.
I do not see the waivers on the application.
I concur. I believe the application said no waivers.
But de facto, do we need to?
Did, yeah, but because it's just an older plot plan, and they just, I can bring the plot plan up if you haven't seen it, but...
Is it just plot plan related?
Yeah, like, you know, there's no drainage calculations. It's, it's a plot plan from 1994, so it's a bit outdated, but it's still the same parking, you know, and layout area. But things like drainage, utilities.
Do we, do we consider this application complete?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Patty, do you have any concerns with the lack of a plot plan? Or a survey?
Lack. Sure, a new one. I think you'd, do you want?
So I obviously have concerns about plot plans and site plans having the minimum requirements. However, what happened here is that the new owners purchased it, and the select board admin, admin staff found out that it kind of fell through the cracks that they never had the special permit required from the zoning board. So we're kind of cleaning up something to take care of it. So they submitted a prior plot plan intending to operate the business the same way. So the additional information that we normally would get, you know, the butter's information, site lighting, drainage, grading, is not on this application. However, the number of vehicles, which is important to, to this office for enforcement, is on the application.
Okay.
That's the story.
So reading between the lines, that's, we're doing a cleanup in aisle four at this point, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right.
What would be the proper language to use for the waivers? Just all required waivers, or shall I list them out?
Um, all required, yeah, that's fine. You don't have to say each one individually.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, I move to approve the request for special, two special permits at 287 Grafton Street made by David Sorbarrow to Section 6, Table 1, to continue operating an automotive repair and sales business, and also to approve all required waivers.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Next hearing on the agenda, this is to hear the appeal of Michael Christopher.
May I just interrupt? Sorry.
Yes.
So as we were, you know, obviously waiting for 34 Elma Circle to come in, I emailed their attorney, and he let me know there was some miscommunication that they will be withdrawing this, this application and moving in a different direction, so.
Okay, so if anyone's here for the Elma Circle hearing, that is going to be withdrawn. So you're welcome to continue to stay in the audience, but I just wanted to let you know that. Okay, thank you for that information. All right. Next is to hear the appeal of, of Michael Christopher of 377 Shrewsbury Street, Worcester, Mass. 01604, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7, Table 2, to build a deck 40.3 feet from the rear yard setback where 50 feet is required in the Residence B2, upon property located at 5-2 Point Road in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 52, Plot 055008. Can I ask the applicant to please step forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
You could state your name for the record, please?
My name is Zachary Kudulis. I represent Michael Christopher and Company of Remodel or Renew Home Improvement. This is the homeowner, the cost.
Welcome. All right, if you could give us some insight into what you're looking to accomplish.
Okay, so what we're trying to accomplish is, is we recently remodeled the existing deck that they have. Now, the existing deck that they have on their house that was built in 2018 is already non-conforming to the zoning bylaws. So you are allowed to have 50 feet from the rear setback of the house. The house right now is 56.37. So the deck is already, because it's existing 12.2, 12 feet, 2 inches, so we're already in, coming into that encroachment. What we are trying to propose is adding just a four-foot catwalk to the edge of the deck, where you can see it shown off of the sunroom, so that way they can still enjoy the outside and look at their kids play in the backyard while they, while they stay remained on the deck. Now, where that deck is, there is some pooling of water that happens a lot of times during the rain and stuff like that, so it's a little moist and a little wet, so they can't really put any chairs or furniture over there, and they just want to be able to sit down and watch their kids play in the yard. They have talked to the neighbor, a neighbor that's adjacent to them connecting in the other townhouse, which is, they have no problem with it. And we have also have a letter that was submitted into the building department for the neighbor directly behind him, who would be the most affected by it, and they have no problem with it either.
Okay. Louise, anything else to add?
Nope, the plot plan is in there with the correct setbacks. I think that covers it.
Great, thank you. David?
Uh, nothing to add at this time.
Okay, Ann?
I think this looks pretty straightforward. I don't think there is a lot of encroachment that's being added here. I don't have a problem with it.
Kevin?
Yeah, I have nothing to add.
Okay, David? I'm sorry, Tim. Where did that come from?
I'm usually over there.
I'm sorry.
This is solely for the rear, rear yard setback. Your side is fine, right?
Yes, those stairs are from the original sunroom, so those are considered into the non-conforming that was already there. So those are, are not within question. It's literally just the four feet coming off the rear of that building. So it's just the rear setback that's affected.
Yeah, okay. No, I don't have any issues with this.
Okay, great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the application of Michael Christopher for 5-2 Point Road in Residence District B2, for a variance to Section 7, Table 2, to build a deck 40 and three tenths feet from the rear yard setback where 50 feet is required.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. You have a lovely night.
You as well. All right, next up, this is to hear the appeal of Donald O'Neil, 688 Pleasant Street, Worcester, Mass. for two variances and two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 6, Table 1, and Section 7E, to operate a gasoline service station with related uses, including convenience store with drive-through window, and to construct two freestanding pylon signs 15 feet from the front yard setback where 50 feet is required on property located at 193 Hartford Turnpike in the Limited Industrial District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 52, Plot 000125. Could I ask the applicant to please step forward?
Madam Chair, I apologize to interrupt again, but this applicant did call earlier. He is attending the Worcester's zoning board meeting at 5:30. He anticipated being here already, but if we could...
Okay, we'll table that and move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Okay. What a fun evening we're having. Okay, I just have to make sure I know what we're doing next. All right. So I think next up, we have, this is for the town of Shrewsbury, applying for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 3F and Section 6, Table 1, to build a new building adjacent to an existing water treatment plant to house a new PFAS treatment system on the property located at 45 Main Street in the Rural B and Aquifer Protected Overlay District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 19, Plot 167000. Welcome, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mandy Truman, Town Engineer. So we're here before you, as described, we're putting in a, a new building at the water treatment plant that we will house the PFAS treatment system. So it's basically almost the same size as the existing treatment plant, which we, as you may remember, we just finished in 2018, and sought a similar permit in 2016, I think. So we are seeking a special permit, we exempt the town from all the zoning bylaw, and it's basically a special permit for use, and we're also seeking two waivers, one for the fee and one for the certified plot plan.
Thank you. Anything to add, Louise? Okay, thank you. David?
Uh, this was the, the addition that was voted on at town meeting this year, correct?
Correct, yeah.
That's all I got.
Ann?
I think the application meets the requirements for special permit.
Thank you. Kevin?
Agreed, nothing to add.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with that as well. When, when will you break ground?
Uh, well, we're currently doing our pre-qual's for the general contractors, so it's going to go out to the bid, so hopefully next year, assuming the bids come in favor of Bleeber. Yes, thanks, yeah.
Thank you. All right, is there, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the application of the town of Shrewsbury for property located at 45 Main Street in the Rural B District for two special permits, Section 3F and Section 6, Table 1, to build a new building adjacent to the existing water treatment plant to house the new PFAS treatment system.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Very much. Good night.
You as well.
All right. All right, next up, this is to hear the appeal of Nathan Borges, 23 Holly Tree Lane in Middleborough, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7, Table 2, to build an addition 30 feet from the rear yard setback where 50 feet is required in a Rural A upon property located at 27 Slocum Ave. in the Rural A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 15, Plot 003007. Good evening, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Uh, yes, my name is Nathan Borges.
My name is Sajid Tied, I'm the owner.
Good evening. If you could let us know what you're looking to do.
Uh, yes, so essentially, on the back of their property, they've already had a deck that was permitted, which encroaches on that rear setback. It's roughly 10 or 11 years ago it was done. Originally, we were going to just try to close it in. We were informed that we could do like a three-season, but then once we added heat, then we'd have to go in front of zoning, just because of it encroaches on that 50, 50-foot setback. And of course, if we close it in, then we would just have to maintain the egress, so that's the point of having like the deck on the side, just to still maintain with egress. So their situation has kind of changed with regards to hardship. They're taking in, is it your mom?
Yes.
Uh, she's currently in the hospital and, I believe, on hospice, and so they're looking to kind of convert a main level area for easy access and to kind of care for her. So that was kind of the, the rush to kind of get this done. So that's...
Okay. All right, Louise, anything else to add?
No, I don't, but there was a certified plot plan uploaded to the Google Drive today, so it does show the exact request now.
Great, thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah, we had originally put it in for 30, because we weren't sure exactly where the plot plan would line, but, so if, if we do 30, that's fine. We're still going to kind of be right where we're, sorry, thank you.
That's okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, David?
It appears you don't have much for backyard neighbors, so I don't think anybody's going to have a problem with that, so I, I don't see a reason to deny.
Thank you.
Ann?
Yeah, even though the requested allowance is, is 20 feet of, of, of space, I don't think it makes much of a, an impact on the neighbors or the, the intent of the bylaw, so I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, neither do I, nothing to add.
Appreciate it.
Is it the addition and a small deck? Is that what I'm seeing on Jarvis's plot?
Correct, yeah, just to maintain the egress from that main level.
Okay.
We just needed a way for, because right now it's a sliding glass door that goes out to a deck and stairs, so...
So the deck will be raised and... So, the deck will be raised and structurally built?
Correct.
Single-story?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
Could I just add one?
Yes.
I, I just want to make sure that we, um, just to correct one thing that you said, since, you know, just part of the record, is that it doesn't matter if it's a, um, conditioned space or not, you would have had to request the relief anyway. Yeah, just to make sure you know, yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the appeal of Nathan Borges of twenty-three Holly Tree Lane in Middleborough, Mass, to, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section seven, Table two, to build an addition thirty feet from the rear yard setback where fifty feet is required in the Rural A zoning district at Pond Property located at twenty-seven Slocum Meadow Lane.
Can I get a second?
Wait, oh, sorry, I was just pausing. The, the subject present, sorry, I know.
That's like rushing things along, huh?
The subject pres, premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate fifteen, Plot zero zero three zero zero seven.
Thank you.
Sorry, point of clarification?
Sure.
On the plot plan, I see thirty-seven point eight feet from the rear line to the proposed addition. But, so it's...
That is the correct, we gave them room within the, the, the notice of thirty feet, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, so the...
And so the thirty-seven is greater than that, so it's, they're seeking less relief now with thirty-seven point eight, so...
So, for the as-built, for Patty later, she'll confirm that it's thirty, right?
Thirty-seven and a half.
Thirty-seven point eight.
What, what, yeah, what happens is that when someone submits an application that is somewhat incomplete, but yet they're working so hard to get in under the deadline...
For the circumstances, yeah.
Right, for the circumstances, so we try to make the, um, legal notice broad to capture, you know, what they may be requesting. So, we put thirty feet in, being a little safer, but they're going to be thirty-seven and point eight feet, so it's a little greater.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Try to...
Sorry about that.
It's that everyone working together to get that in, yeah.
Good catch, Tim, thank you. Good. All right, um, can I get a motion, please? Oh, I already have a motion.
I articulated it very slowly.
You did, you did. Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, that looks like we might have run out of time. So, we have, um, Elma Circle, which is, um, been withdrawn.
Yep.
And we have, um, perhaps a continuation?
Well, I think we have, we have some representatives. We just don't have the engineer.
Oh, I see. You want to go?
So...
All right.
All right.
Put you on the spot here. All right, so why don't you just go back to my handy notes? All right, so, um, this is to hear the appeal of Donald O'Neil, six eighty-eight Pleasant Street, Worcester, for two variances and two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section six, Table one, and Section seven E, to operate a gasoline service station with related uses, including convenience store and drive-through window, and to construct two freestanding pylon signs fifteen feet from the front yard setback where fifty feet is required on property located at one ninety-three Hartford Turnpike in the limited industrial district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate fifty-two, Plot zero 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 one two five. If you could approach and state your name for the record and talk to us about what you are looking to accomplish, please.
Yes, my name is Dennis Darvo with Yadco Energy. Um, Don O'Neil is the attorney, but he got tied up at another hearing in Worcester, so I will do my best to fill his shoes.
Great, thank you.
Um, we're looking for the variance for, uh, the two freestanding signs. Uh, the property is very long on Route twenty, so we'd like to have one kind of at each end, um, to, you know, to, to show where the driveways are, and so people don't miss the driveways and panic and freeze and, you know, hit the brakes. Uh, the fifteen-foot setback, if you go by the fifty feet, if you look at the design of the property, it puts it right in the middle of the parking area and the drive aisles, uh, for both signs, being so far back. Because based on the design criteria, um, we're allowed to be having driveways a lot closer than that. So, that, that becomes our drive aisles around the property. And by doing that, the signs would end up right in the middle of the drive aisles, which would impede all the traffic and the circulation on the property. And then the convenience store will have a, uh, coffee shop component to it, which would require a drive-through window. Which is on the building in the, right there in the upper right corner, yes, correct.
So, I think we just want to add that this application is also before the planning board. So, they'll also be hearing all of the, you know, usual things about, um, drainage, traffic, lighting, everything that comes under their jurisdiction. So, these are the special permits that's required for the drive-through and the use and the setbacks for the signs.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, would you like to start, David?
Uh, yeah, the, this, this, the request for the signage location is, I think, reasonable, given the lot size, shape, and, uh, and dimensions. Um, I'm thankful to hear that this is going before the planning board, because I'm, I'm certain the traffic portion is going to come up there. Um, and, um, that's not our purview here. We're looking at, like, like Louis said, we're looking at the signs and we're looking at the drive-through. I think that a location, as far as a drive-through goes, it makes sense to me. I don't see any issues with that. Your backyard neighbor would be a asphalt plant and grocery store across the street, so it, uh, drive-through seems appropriate.
Anne?
Um, we did receive a letter from, I think, the folks associated with the Market Basket about traffic. Can you talk, and they were concerned about left turns and things like that. Can, can you talk a little bit about why that traffic, um, is appropriate? Or is Planning Board going to...
Yeah, it'll, never mind, I withdraw. I don't have any other questions.
But just so you know, we've already met with Mass DOT, because they control that section of the road. We've already had preliminary meetings, and this was based on what they recommended. We had a slightly different traffic pattern for the driveways, but this is exactly what they recommended for approval. So, we said, all right, well, we're not going to fight, we're not going to fight Mass DOT, so we did it according to their specs.
I don't have any problems with anything else on it.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, I see we have a traffic impact study that was provided to us, and I believe we do have some say on it. We've talked about it with other, um, projects before, most notably the Subaru dealership. That was a topic of conversation that we did, um, have a bit of control over. So, I don't know if I'd feel comfortable voting on this tonight, given that we haven't had any town peer review, uh, completed on it.
Can you talk to us about that process? That's falling under the purview of the planning board, if I'm not...
Yeah, um, and I mean, I, under traffic-related items, I guess, I mean, Patty, I don't know about like with sight lines within the proposed signage and whether or not that's reasonable, that you've seen in the past. But I think that would be the only thing that you would be, be like, look at, you know, because you are looking at the, the signage and then the gasoline station and the, and the drive-through in the back for the convenience store, so...
Okay, because we did have a lot of topics of conversation, given entrance in and out of that Subaru...
That's true.
Dealership. So, was that, were we not supposed to have those conversations then? Because we had multiple...
Right, miss, yeah.
Months of that conversation.
It's not your staff person during that time, so, um, I don't...
You do raise a good point.
Um, so it is me, it is reasonable to say, if you'd like to see, um, the peer review documents from, you know, the different elements that the peer reviewers review for the planning board, um, you could certainly wait and ask for, and ask for those documents so that you have the same information as the planning board does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's reasonable.
Okay.
When's the planning board, when's this in front of planning?
Um, it's already in front of planning. Um, when we talk about traffic, I don't have that off the top of my head right now.
Okay.
Okay, usually, usually these things have gone through planning before they hit our desks.
Yeah, but it's in the process.
Well, yeah, usually zoning and then...
What happens is, we do like to have zoning go first, because if we're going to allow some dimensional relief, then it has to be put on the final planning board documents...
Yeah.
Um, for them to review.
Hmm, okay. Okay, go ahead, Tim.
And the, the variance of the dimensional relief is only for the signage?
It's only for the signage, right. The other is the, the use that's required, you know, in the use table, um, you know, for the drive-through and for the, um, gas station with the retail sales.
For this zone?
Yep.
Okay, and then the, the, the issue at hand may be the impact on the traffic and the public good, perhaps.
So, the signs are set back fifteen feet from the, um, property line, not from the public way, but from the property line?
Sure.
So, obviously, that would be reviewed for a line of sight to make sure it doesn't obstruct anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not so much worried about the signage, because given vegetation...
Yeah.
As it currently sits, it's clearly an improvement. Okay, yeah, I mean, I might be getting a little bit ahead of myself, given what the special permits and variances are for, so I apologize.
No worries, it's ve, very rigorous with Mass DOT, so...
I don't have any further, I don't have any further questions.
Welcome, I see we have somebody that just joined us, so...
Donald O'Neil, I've been learning Worcester here on behalf of the applicant, so I'm sorry I was, uh, late.
Had to be in three places at one time?
That's correct. Uh, the, and, and I'm not sure how far you got into the initial part of it, but you want me to just briefly summarize?
Maybe just the legal, the legal end of things. You did a great job in, in your absence. If there's anything else that you'd like to add, we'd be happy to hear it.
Um, just that this is, um, limited industrial zone, uh, slightly under four acres. Uh, I believe a couple of years back, there was a similar, um, submission that, um, uh, never went forward, but they had gone through, I think, the approval process with the planning board and presumably the zoning board as well.
For the same site?
Same.
For this site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and basically same, very similar, um, use. But, um, we're proposing, um, gasoline service station, uh, with related uses. In this case, um, we would have a, the station itself with a convenience store component, um, and also a, we're planning to have a, um, coffee drive-through window. Um, and, um, you know, in addition to, um, the usual setup that you would expect in terms of, uh, payment for the gas and also the convenience store element to that with the, um, coffee component. And we would also be looking for a quick-serve restaurant to be located, all within the same building, accessed by the one door, basically one building. Um, and that would, um, be part of the component. That is about a seven thousand square foot building, give or take. Uh, we were proposing forty-five parking spaces, uh, for the customers. In addition, the plan shows additional parking for employees. Um, and then, uh, closer to the intersection of, of Lake Street and Hartford Turnpike, uh, we're proposing a, uh, car wash facility. Uh, that would have, um, thirteen vacuum stations, and that also has a separate six parking spaces as well. There are two access points off, um, Route twenty. Um, and, uh, the main one is, is, is shown, um, sort of directly in front. The other access is for, um, in addition to, we were proposing six pumping stations for regular, um, gas deliveries. Um, not gas deliveries, but, but customer, you know, um, average passenger vehicles for, for servicing. We also have a provision for, uh, diesel, um, fueling, uh, shown on the plan, um, to the, to the left of the main building, where there would be two, um, high-speed diesel, uh, lanes for that location. Um, we have, uh, reviewed these plans and modified plans, um, with the, um, Mass DOT. Uh, and they, um, have essentially, um, you know, approved this design concept. We did go to the planning board, uh, had an initial meeting, um, and are scheduled to go back, uh, in a couple of weeks, um, to, uh, further review the plan. It, it's all, of course, subject to the, um, planning board's approval of site plan. And, uh, we, we've recently got, uh, some comments back from the town's review engineer, which we are, um, you know, in the process of working through, but it, it doesn't appear to be anything, um, that can't be addressed on our end. Um, but the location itself, I mean, it's a kind of a blighted, um, spot with two concrete block buildings that are vacant, have been vacant for quite some time. Um, and, and is an area which we feel is ripe for redevelopment. Um, of course, those buildings would be demolished and we'd be replacing them with the, uh, new structures. The, um, car wash facility is about forty-eight hundred square feet. Um, and, um, it does have, uh, significant, uh, queuing capacity, so that there should never be any issues with, related to that. Uh, and that's something which is, um, you know, being scrutinized and dealt with at the planning board level as well. Uh, but we feel that it's an appropriate location, um, for this type of use, uh, that there's a need for it. Um, and that, um, uh, we'd like to try and, uh, fill that need and provide, um, you know, ad, additional services to, to the public.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we open it up?
I do, I do have one more. Did the Mass DOT study allow for a left turn onto Route twenty from the, from the property?
Yes.
So, to you, okay.
That's...
Just curious, that's a highway.
Yeah. Okay.
Traffic is the big concern here, obviously.
Right, Kevin hit upon that early on.
Yeah.
All right, maybe we open it up to the public and hear any comments, and then continue to chat. Um, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on the matter? If you'd step forward, please, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carmine Tomas. I'm here on behalf of Demola Supermarkets, which owns the, um, Edmire Crossing Development right across the street at two hundred Hartford Ave. And I'm here tonight not because, you know, we, we look to interfere with development that happens around us. Uh, it's really because we, uh, took a look at the plans that are being proposed, um, and we do have some serious concerns about traffic. We've just been through the processes, everyone knows, of going through approvals with the town, working with the town to get all those improvements to Route twenty, uh, improvements at that Lake, Lake Street signal. And we, uh, it's our baby, it's the town's baby. We really want to be sure that nothing that happens here will, um, adversely impact that or result in a safety, uh, safety issues or safety concerns or affect the functionality of that intersection, um, or certainly the safety issues onto Route twenty. Um, so I think really my thoughts here tonight, um, and it's kind of similar to what, um, the discussions that have been happening with the board, which is traffic. And, um, because I was, I was thinking to myself about these, these similar issues as I was trying to familiarize myself with where these, these folks, folks are in the process right now. I do, this is obviously my view, but I do believe that traffic is, um, a, a critical component of this special permit request. One of the special permits that they are requesting is for the gas station use itself. Um, you cannot have the gas station use without having the access points. And one of the things that the bylaws and that the, um, uh, the statute in, in Massachusetts requires is that there not be a detrimental, detrimental impact on the neighborhood. The bylaws call out traffic as one of those things that, that should be considered. Um, and so I, I don't know how the board... And so I don't know how the board would want to handle that, but I, I do want to go on the record as saying that I really do believe, given the substantial traffic issues that are being presented by this application that I know are being looked at by the planning board and peer review as part of that process, I do believe that this is critical to the board's being able to determine whether the criteria have been met here. We would certainly like to be involved in that process and having our traffic engineer take a closer look at what their traffic engineer is proposing. I related in my letter, this was referenced, that, you know, Mass DOT certainly did not take that position with us about allowing left turns out onto Route 20. You know, they did not think that was a very good idea at all and we certainly understood why. So, in any case, I just wanted to go on record as saying that, you know, we certainly would like to see some significant focus as part of this proposal on traffic to be sure that there aren't any consequences that, that would be regretted by, by the community and the neighborhood, including Market Basket.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that input. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, so, this is an interesting one. I don't have any issue with the sign and I don't have any issue with the use, but I, I would agree that traffic has become a concern of mine and a peer review, just getting more information, I think, on, first of all, I want to just say, economic development in this area, we want that, so it's, we're thrilled. I just want to be prudent myself in establishing that we're all working under the same scenario that all the other projects in town around this area have gone through. So I do have concerns about traffic myself at this point. But I'm one member of a board, so I'm going to pass it off to David and see what he thinks.
Yeah, for the most part, I will echo our chair. And the signs, I, like, absolutely no problem, they're, they make sense, they're located in the right place, it's a functional part of the business. The, the use, I agree, is completely appropriate for the area, the traffic is the concern. As the, as the, the public mentioned, you know, the traffic is part, I guess, part of the consideration for the special use permit. So my, my personal opinion would be you shouldn't make a left turn onto Route 20. But the, exactly how the mechanations go for where we, where we go from here, that part is a little unclear to me, but that is, that's where I'm at.
Good evening, Mr. O'Neil, nice to see you here. The, I have the same issue, I would have no problem saying yes to this if there were a no-left-turn condition placed on this, you know, whether that's our purview. I do echo Mr. Nisbet in saying we have dealt with that on many different, several different occasions in the last couple of years, so I don't think we, we can't consider parking. It's just left turns out of there, I think, are, would be extremely dangerous and I think they might contravene everything that we've tried to do in developing the Market Ba-, Market, Market Basket parcel, so I don't know if you guys have considered no-left turn?
I, I do know from, from our meeting that, the meeting that we had with the planning board, that the, our traffic engineer, you know, had, had looked at all of these issues and feels that, you know, what's proposed is safe and, you know, is quantifiable in terms of the, you know, the analysis they've done based on vehicle trips and so on and so forth. So we, he feels very positive about what we're proposing and I, it is being reviewed, you know, by the town's engineer. And I don't know if there's a way to, you know, to maybe let that review process play out before you make a determination. Because the, you know, we feel confident basically that we, expectation would be that the peer review will come back and will agree with what we're proposing, that, that it is not a, not a concern. And that to change, if we were to, this is what's been presented, that this is what was also reviewed with Mass DOT. And of course, they, you know, they're ultimately controlling that and those are all issues that, you know, that they're aware of and that the, this area has been recently upgraded and it does, the traffic engineer feels that it has the capacity basically for what we're proposing. So I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's something that might be possibly conditioned on, we, we need planning board approval as well. And the planning board is going to be relying upon their peer review, you know, in order to make a determination. And I think if they don't feel that it's safe, then they won't approve it. And that review process is, as I say, is ongoing. My suggestion might be that the, if you could consider, basically you need both approvals so that if you were to have a condition that might be approved, you know, provided that the arrangement in terms of the access is, is viewed by and approved by the planning board as a condition. So that if they, if they denied it, then, you know, that would be, it would, there would be no approval in that situation. But we feel that we, the feedback that we've been getting has been positive and expect that, that they will approve, you know, the left turn.
It's, the, the public hearing's already been closed.
I was just wondering if we could go out in hallway and talk for two minutes, would that be appropriate?
Not during a hearing, it's not. Nope, sorry. You had a chance during the public hearing to, to talk, that would have been the right time. We can take a short break, that is within our right to do that. I will give you five minutes. All right, welcome back.
Well, thank you for indulging us. So one of the issues, I think, with the illumination of, of the left-hand turn is that the traffic light, that if you went right, if I understand it correctly, there's no left-hand turn at the light.
Yeah. Meetings with Mass DOT and our traffic review engineer, the reason that they're allowing a left turn out of that slot is because when they redid Route 20, when they did that intersection at Lake Street, okay, they didn't provide for a U-turn to change direction. There's no U-turn lane, there's no left-hand lane with a bulb on the other side to allow for U-turns. They did not want to burden Lake Street by pushing all our traffic, anything off of that side entrance. That's the only one that connects Lake Street, that's as far back as we can push it because that's the only property we have. So they felt that we, we extended the turn lane so you can take a left into the property when you're coming down Route 20. And they feel that that's enough because the intervals between the light, red and green, all the intervals between the light allow for a left turn out. And all the studies show that and all the, you know, the grading of the intersection, you know, they grade them A to, A to F, D or better is acceptable. And it's within that range with the left turns out. Because I think it's, like, don't quote me, I'm not the traffic engineer, but roughly eighty-two percent of the traffic that is considered pass-by traffic, as opposed to a Market Basket, which is, which is a destination. This is, traffic is already on Route 20, eighty-something percent of the traffic is already on Route 20, so it's just a matter of in and out, right? So it's not a destination, that's why they feel that the intervals in the traffic light are enough to create the left turns onto Route 20 without burdening Lake Street with all the traffic trying to make a left to get out of the site. That was, that was from, from Mass DOT.
If I may ask you a question, the, if the majority, the vast majority of the traffic is pass-through traffic, that means you're talking about customers who are already westbound on Route 20 and will continue westbound on Route 20, correct?
Correct, I mean, you know.
So then, so then why-
This type of-
-do you need a left turn in general out onto-
It's not just westbound, it's eastbound as well.
Well, right.
Passed by either way.
You could take, if it's, if it's like eighty, eighty-five percent are turning in and then they're turning out, then a left turn prohibition onto Route 20 makes sense to me because if I, as a driver, as a motorist, was like, oh, I need to turn direction, I'm going to take your exit onto Lake Street and then take the signalized left turn because that's going to be the easiest thing for me. Do you happen to know what the distance is from the stop line at that signal on Route 20 West all the way to where a proposed left turn is? Is that eighty feet, is it a hundred and twenty feet?
That I don't know, it's a couple hundred feet.
Is it two hundred feet?
It's a couple hundred feet if I'm mistaken.
I know anecdotally, from driving in that area, it can back up well past your property line. And so somebody trying to fight across two lanes of travel in that direction is what people have concerns about.
Yeah. You know, like I said, I'm, I'm not the traffic engineer, but they have all the data, they have all the maps, they have all the turning movements all calculated out and they did that with Mass DOT and Mass DOT had no issue with it.
So what, what I'm trying to achieve with that line of questioning is not a resolution to the traffic question, but is a, a flavor of what everybody's thinking about, right? And so if we, as a board, are to approve your special permit right here today and now, then we've given our, our thumbs up and say, we're okay with everything that happens after. If it goes to planning board and they say yes or no, then it's out of our, out of our hands.
Could I just say, I mean, obviously there are traffic engineers and this is what they do for a living and we have, you know, a plan that's been prepared and submitted and we would expect probably to have the response back from the town's review. I, I'm hoping that it's the next meeting, but, but it would be, it seemed to me it'd be kind of a shame to, not to have the benefit, for the board not to have the benefit of that so that if, you know, the peer review from the town comes back and says that, you know, this is, this is appropriate and that the traffic can be handled as proposed and our engineer also says the same thing, I, I think that that, you know, would be beneficial to the board at least to have, have, have their professional opinions on, on both sides. And of course, our engineer, we're, we're looking for approval, but the peer review is to, is to be independent, impartial and, you know, render their own decision. So I was trying to think of a way to sort of like get the benefit of that just through the, you know, through the tie-in back to the planning board approval. The only other possibility I could think of would be to, I'm not sure if you're closed a hearing, if it's possible to-
Continue.
Right. Well, we certainly don't want a denial and I don't think that we can agree with what we've got to, you know, accept it without a left-hand turn because that, that, could I suggest then leave to withdraw without prejudice and then we'll get through the planning board process and then when we have their blessing on the arrangement and then the peer review for the town has weighed in and, and says that, yeah, you're right, the left doesn't work or, you know, the, the left works fine, we can just come back before you and with the benefit of that decision being in place and, and try again.
So I think procedurally, we can, they can do a withdrawal.
An application may be with, may be withdrawn without prejudice at any time prior to the public hearing by notifying, so after the opening of the public hearing, but prior to the filing of the decision, an application may be withdrawn by mutual consent of the applicant and a majority of the board.
So I do think that's the most prudent course forward, given the information that we have at hand. We cannot make a condition on another board, so that's out. We can't continue because we've closed a public hearing, so I think that, I don't want to-
Question for the chair?
Yes.
Could we condition it for approval based on a positive outcome of the peer review?
We can't, a positive outcome of the peer review, no, because that's-
Historically, yeah, not.
I don't think it's going to hold up myself.
Okay.
As much as I want to say yes, again, we, from the economic development and the perspective of the Route 20 corridor getting better, we totally agree. I have no problem with ninety percent of this application, but there's this one hook that we are really concerned about. I'm reading the, so Anne, do you want to weigh in?
Oh, yes, I agree with you, I think it's, we'd love to have a gas station there, I think the, the project looks great and I think that it is within our rights to allow you to withdraw without prejudice. I think we have, do we have to continue it to a date certain or we could just-
No, we can't.
Withdraw it?
We can't, because we don't know.
For, you know, for a date to be determined in the future, is what I think.
Do we have agreement with the board would all support that?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I really think that's your best course forward, unless you want us to deny it, which isn't going to help you.
Yeah, and, and it's not, it's, it's, just refile the application and it's, it's almost like a continuance with the benefit of the, and if it turns out that, you know, it takes two meetings, you know, with the, with the planning board in order to get through the entire process, whatever, then we can-
Right, we can get you right back on.
We'll have that squared away.